Good. Okay, welcome to Town Council Thursday, July the 8th. Call the meeting to order and we'll stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Lindsey, you have the record of attendance and no absent with regrets. But I think now would be an appropriate time for a moment of silence because right now we're missing, we're missing Jim at the table, so let's have a moment of silence for Jim. Thanks, everyone. This is gonna be a, gonna be a hard one. Any declarations of conflict of interest, and we can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item? Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions, anyone? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as it is. Okay, Counselor Dairs, second by Counselor Lesser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Approval of minutes, we have Town Council June the 10th, please. And the motion would be to approve those minutes as circulated. Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Lesser, any discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Special Town Council, June 14th, please. Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Hatfield, any discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. And Committee of the Whole, June 24th, please. Counselor Hatfield, second by Deputy Mayor, any discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. I'm at, feel like I'm at June 28th, Special Town Council.
June 24th.
June 24th, yeah, there's one ahead two here, that's why. Okay, June 24th?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Cleveland, second by Deputy Mayor. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Now we are at Special Town Council, June 28th, please. Counselor Cleveland, go ahead, Counselor Lesser? Well, hang on one second, though, because guess what just happened? There you go.
I don't know if it has to be second at first for discussion, but the date at the end of the June 28th, it just says 9:20 PM. And I don't think it was a 12-hour meeting, so I don't know if that matters or not, but I think it should say AM.
Yep.
Okay.
We can make that adjustment, thank you. Okay, so who made that one, made that motion? Counselor Cleveland, second by Counselor Lesser, any discussion?
Question.
Questions called on this one, with that change. All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. All right, under Business arising, is there anything there that anybody wants to bring up? That was in any of the minutes? Good, okay. Number nine, new business, 9A is committee appointments. And the recommended motion is that council appoint the various council members to the committee. So correct any of these that are wrong. We, we replace, we had to fill in some blanks, so Planning Advisory would be Counselor Cleveland as Chair, myself, Counselor Dairs, and Counselor Hatfield. Is that correct? Okay. Doctor Recruitment, Counselor Hatfield, did you say you would take that one? Library Board, Counselor Cleveland, and Waterfront Development, Deputy Mayor. Okay. Were there, and we need, let's do that now. So Doctor Recruitment, we have our person, but we need an alternate. Do you want to be, okay, so Counselor Lesser is asking to be alternate. Are we, does anybody disagree? Are we okay with that? Did anybody else want to put their name forward? Okay, so we'll do that all at once on this one. Lindsey, was there any others that we had to? Deputy, did you? And did you mention audit? Okay. I don't think he was on Waze Park. Okay. Yep, no, that's okay. I mean, we can do these, and then if, if something else comes up, is everybody okay with that? If something else comes up, we'll do the addition. Deputy, are you good with that one? Okay. All right, so as recommended, as I just read, I'm looking for that motion. Counselor Dairs, second by Counselor Lesser, any further discussion on that? Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, thanks, everyone. Okay, 9B, MPS and LUB Amendment Policy Review. So the recommended motion there is that council pass first reading to amend the municipal planning strategy and/or land use bylaw amendment policy as recommended by staff. CAO, did you want to speak to that, just for the information?
I'll just speak very quickly, so as we're doing policy review, this was one of the policies that the planning department reviewed. There are a couple of housekeeping amendments, as you can see within the first few clauses. There's a reference back to the town's Schedule of Fees, Schedule of Fees policy, so kind of a cross-reference there. And, and then it goes on to talk about the process of how we make planning amendments. And so adding that detail to the policy is a good idea. I should say that because this is a policy, it does not require a second reading. So if council approves this tonight, that then becomes our updated policy.
Okay, good. Okay, moved by Counselor Lesser, second by Deputy Mayor. Any more discussions or any questions about this one? Okay. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, 9C is the livestock bylaw, and the recommended motion there is that council pass first reading to amend the livestock bylaws recommended by staff. So there were a number of changes in there, who would like to make that motion? Okay, Counselor Cleveland, second by Deputy Mayor. You certainly can, yes. Go ahead.
Yes, if I could, I'm just reading through that bylaw, and I, I see where the following use should still be deemed prohibited. And it refers to things such as poultry and egg farms, sheep and goat farms, or dairy farms. And I'm just wondering, is there a differential, a difference between a farm and somebody having one goat? I'm just wondering if farm makes it sound like it's plural.
Come on up, Mr. Planner. Do we have a microphone for? There you go.
Yeah, so within the land use bylaw, so bylaw 539, it restricts those or prohibits those throughout the town. So as a clarification, there are agricultural uses that can be permitted within the town, but it's within the residential holding and commercial, or a comprehensive development zone. And so within those areas, for example, if somebody wanted to have a couple chickens, and say if they wanted a couple chickens on their property and they were within zone of residential holding or a comprehensive development zone, then they would allow to do so. Joanne would be able to give a permit for that, only if the eggs are for their own sole purpose and not for business purposes only. So there are, so there is a difference between somebody who's having like a farm and, you know, like a number of livestock and somebody with, you know, a couple chickens, or, or as you said, like a goat.
Okay, I thought my understanding was that raising chickens in town or having chickens in town was prohibited. So.
Yeah, so.
I just want clarification, thank you. I was asked the question, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so it's just, just as clarification, it's just within the residential holding and comprehensive development zones.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
So where are they?
So kinda on the, there's a, you know, within the comprehensive development zone, it's kinda on the southeast quadrant, quadrant of the area. Residential holding zones are mostly areas that we zone that don't have, you know, sewer or water infrastructure.
Okay.
So kind of, not, not anywhere like downtown or anything.
Yeah, on the peripheral, basically.
Exactly.
Okay. Does that, does that answer your question? It, it sorta does.
It doesn't, doesn't, because I, I see where I'm gonna get called tomorrow and asked by a neighbor, can I get four chickens?
Yeah.
And, and I'm not sure I can explain it to them clearly.
Right.
So. But I'll, I'll read it, thank you very much, I'll do my homework.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, so the zoning map found within the land use bylaw is, be the place to go because you can't have, you can't have chickens. You can't have a couple of chickens unless you're in residential holding or comprehensive development zone. And those areas are clearly identified within the zoning map. If they're within those zones, then they can apply, or they should contact the development office to see if they're okay to have a couple chickens. And they'll be told as Reese's indicated, as the planners indicated, if the eggs are for personal use and there aren't a large flock of chickens. I don't know if they defined in the land use bylaw the difference between farm and personal use. It's the number of chickens or the number of eggs, I don't know.
So does it, do you want Lindsey to send the map? So you can be able to pass that on?
I can probably find it, but thank you.
Is that okay, Lindsey? You can, yeah. And then it's easier for you to say, no, you can't. I know it's hard. Go ahead, Counselor Hatfield.
I have some questions about that, too, I think I'm on the same page as Gil with this. So the, this residential piece where you can have chickens, what did you call it, a residential?
Residential holding.
Holding. So what does, what does that look like? Tell me, describe that to me.
Well, it would just look like, I mean, so I had to clarify this with the development officer as well, because there was somebody who was, you know, looking into that as well. But it would just be, you know, having a couple chickens on your property and for just personal, personal use.
What area of town, like I have a residence, like to me, that sounds like any residence could have chickens.
It's on, you just said the southeast quadrant, pretty much?
Yeah, so you can think of it like, for example, there's a couple residential holding areas, and there's Prospect and Pleasant Street, so kinda like on the periphery of the boundaries of the town.
And the other thing you said was that there's not services.
Yeah.
Right. So it's not like service lots and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet.
How many unserviced lots would there be in town?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. I mean, there are definitely a few areas that are unserviced, for sure. I would have to look into that and maybe get that to you.
Okay, thank you, Reese, I'll, I'll give you a call, thank you.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, thanks, Gil.
Thank you. Go ahead, CAO.
So your worship, just for, for council's reference, if, if you go to the Town of Yarmouth website, and under Departments, Land Use Bylaw Planning, Maps, I can send you a link to it, make it easier. But there is a zoning map that you can, you can open, and see if I've got it here open. I do. And I know this won't be very much help to you at this, at that distance, but it is the, the southeast quadrant of town, essentially going from, let's say Broadbrook Park, south, and east of, pretty much east of Pleasant Street or east of the park, that, that quadrant of town is, is the comprehensive development zone. There's, there's some larger lots there, and there's opportunity for, for development. Likewise, the northeast quadrant, slightly smaller than a quadrant, I guess, is, is where you find most of the residential holding. And so that is area that is, that is unserviced. It's behind, it's behind the residences on Pleasant Street, towards the town boundary or, or let's say the 101. There's a lot of land in there that is not serviced, is not developed, there's no streets. That is where the residential holding zone primarily is.
And even there, it's just a couple, it might be a couple chickens, and they're for your own use. Okay. Guess I would ban it all together, but I. Any more questions on this one? So, so here's another one. Quite a few times, not in the last couple months, but in the last couple years, we, we have a pig or two running around town. Shouldn't say running around town, but people that have pigs. Right, yes, they still do. So that's not, that's not permitted? Good, thank you. All right, so the recommended motion is that council pass first reading to amend the livestock bylaws recommended by staff. Okay, Counselor Hatfield, and seconded by Counselor Dairs, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, 9D is Special Election 2021. And the recommended motion there is that council establish Saturday, September 18, 2021, as the date for a special election in the Town of Yarmouth to fill the seat vacated by the passing of Counselor Jim McLeod. And I understand that within four weeks, we have had, we would have had to do this, correct? CAO?
Yeah, so, so the way the act is, is when a seat is, is vacated, council has to have a meeting within four weeks and set the date for the special election. And that special election cannot be more than 11 weeks from the date of that meeting of council.
So, so we're clear on that? I, I just wanted, it's, we're not trying to rush anything. We have to legally, we have to do this within a certain amount of time. So that is the recommend, first recommended motion for Saturday, September the 18th. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion on this, concerns, anything? Go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
Would there be any benefit to waiting until closer to the 23rd and extending out of two weeks? Or are you comfortable with the 18th of September?
I talked to, to Mr. Solos, our returning officer, and, and he and I agreed that, that taking the full extent of the 11 weeks that you have from this date and putting it on the 18th would, would get us past summer. We don't know if there's gonna be an election call at either the provincial or federal level, or when that might be, so we'd only be guessing, but by allowing the maximum, the 11 weeks from, from today to hold that election, we're both comfortable with that, so.
Okay, thank you.
But we did also, I think it maybe references in the request for decision that you could defer this a further two weeks and have a special council meeting on our committee of the whole date. That would give two more weeks, but, you know, again, there's only marginal benefit to that in terms of pushing it out in the future and, and trying to avoid other election conflicts, you know, making sure people are aware of it, and allowing returning officer time to get this going. I think September 18th is fine.
Thank you.
Good, okay. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. The next under 9D is a motion that the special election be held by alternative voting methods, telephone and internet only. So we're looking for that motion. Okay, Counselor Cleveland, second by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on that one? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, and, and by that, by that, you know, people can still come to Town Hall, and the returning officer will still get out to the seniors' residences and places like that. It's just that we're not, it's not paper ballots, that's the only difference. And the third one under the special election motion is that the advanced poll be a continuous poll commencing 9:00 AM Thursday, September 9, 2021, and continuing up until ordinary polling day. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Hatfield. Any discussion on this one? I have a question. As soon as we pass this, is the, is the election on? Is it all, both team ahead?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion on, thank you, questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thanks, everyone. 9E, Mitch Zwicker Status. The recommended motion there is that council award veteran status to Mitch Zwicker as recommended by the fire chief. Moved by Counselor Lesser, second by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Just a thank you to Mitch, first time, it's, it's not easy being a firefighter for most of your life as a volunteer. I know my, my, one of my daughters and her husband volunteer firefight, and they're, it's, it's a big time commitment, so just a thank you to Mitch for the time he has put in.
So just for, just for information, the note from the, the fire chief, it says Mitch has given of himself tirelessly as an important part of the fire service here in Yarmouth. He will be missed at staging, making sure the team re-hets properly and are hydrated, ready to go again. I've reviewed Mitch's file and have found he meets the required criteria for council's consideration, so recommended by the fire chief, so, good. Okay, anything else on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Reports, Committee of the Whole, Deputy Mayor, that would be you. Go ahead.
Recommended motion that council adopt the flag pole, or the flag policy as presented.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
That council directs staff to develop a policy for dark sky-friendly lighting, a bylaw for new developments, and an engagement process for business, for the business community.
Second, seconded by Counselor Cleveland, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
That council pass first reading to amend the civic addressing bylaw to include guidance to property owners on signage placement, design, and maintenance.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Hatfield, discussion? All questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
That council directs staff to inquire with other municipal units in order to develop a robust outdoor fire bylaw which would address the concerns raised in opposition of open fires within the urban environment while offering a viable property owners the ability to enjoy this pastime.
Seconded by Counselor Dairs, any discussion? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
That council defer the Yarmouth Food Bank Society's request until September.
Seconded by Counselor Hatfield, any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
That council directs staff to consult with legal around the powers and authorities council has providing access to services when one has an order on a property.
Moved and seconded. Was the answer right, no, there, Craig?
Is that a building permit?
It was around, it was around the permits, we're, yeah.
Yeah, and you can't deny a building permit against an order on a property.
Okay. I, I did read that, I read it quickly, it sorta said no. So my question is, sorry, it sorta said no. So, so what legislation is that? Is that MGA, or is that like a?
The Building Code Act.
Building Code Act.
It basically said that the building official schedule is you permit provided that the, the act is compliant with, you know.
And because it's provincial, it's provincial?
That's provincial.
Because it's provincial, nothing we write is gonna supersede it. You could've said all that without telling me, I had no choice, because I told him. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I'm wondering if there's a, does a set, is there a set rate for that, or can that be? Could we look at setting rates case by case if we needed to?
Look at, look at our solicitor's face.
I think that would be difficult because you're talking to a great space on the person that's applying as opposed to something else, like building, or residential, or different things like that. And if there's a requirement that the, some of the latest administrative costs, when you've seen there's any kind of penalties, you know, that you can understand that.
So for example, the administrative cost of, of, of us continuing to dole out certain permits is astronomical. That's the problem. Right, it's, it's cost us, it's cost us a lot of money because we just keep giving out these permits. That's where I think there's gotta be a little loophole, but I, I guess it's, it's not there yet. Not yet. Okay. Okay, so the motion is that council directs staff to consult with legal around, okay. You know what, since we're making, since we're making that motion, we're gonna do that again. And see if he comes back with a different answer. It's, it's, it's really difficult, you know, in a, in a small community where so many people are just, they're doing everything they can to, to up the ante and to beautify, and, you know, with, with, throw in planning and, and the facade society and all the work that's being done for somebody to be able to come in and just, it's just awful. It's, it's, I'm not, I'm not quitting yet. Okay, so moved and seconded, who seconded that? Counselor Lesser? Okay, any more discussion on that one? Okay, questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, and then there's one right under it.
That council direct staff to perform a jurisdictional scan around information council can provide at tax sales.
So what does that one mean, CAO?
Uh, that arose from the discussion, uh, at Committee of the Hold. Uh, I think it was Councilor Daers that made a, made a suggestion around, uh, um, the, um, situation that may have occurred in the town where, where a person purchased a property at tax sale and was unaware of the, of the condition of the building, and, and it was whether or not, um, we could do any kind of assessment of the condition, uh, kind of providing buyers with, with more information. And so the, the motion was to see what, what other, what other municipalities may be doing in that regard.
Okay, I, I recall that now, I, I even remember the property. Okay, so, uh, moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilor Daers. Any discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Go ahead, deputy?
That council direct staff to investigate a well lending program for the town of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded by Councilor Cleveland. Discussion, go ahead, deputy?
And that's just to follow up to some residents on the Ellis Road who aren't serviced by, um, water in Yarmouth, and we're just wondering if we could help them out, obviously given the drought and things that are around and lugging water isn't easiest. So, I know our sister municipality, Modi, has a well lending program, and if we could help out our citizens with that, the few that there are that earn our town water, I think that would be a good thing.
Good. Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. We, go ahead, deputy?
That council designate PID 90238767 as a street of right of way which will become an extension of Harrington Avenue in the town of Yarmouth.
Seconded by Councilor Lesser, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, go ahead, deputy?
That council allow Meadowfield School Advisory Council and the Rotary Club to proceed with an outdoor classroom in Rotary Park.
Moved, seconded by Councilor Cleveland. That nod of the head was a second, right? Okay, any discussion? Oh, go ahead, Councilor Daers.
Yeah, just quickly, and, um, just so people know that it's really not an outdoor classroom, it's an open air facility. Um, the outdoor classroom would have been sited on the school grounds, but the, uh, the intent is to create something that the larger community can use on a regular basis.
Good, thank you. All right, any further discussion, anyone?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, and the last one.
That council direct staff to develop a skills base matrix for committee appointments.
Seconded by Councilor Cleveland. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Uh, okay, citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, there was nothing there. Councilor Cleveland, your chair there, there's nothing?
Nothing at all.
Okay, I am going to add, uh, with your permission, um, uh, the deputy mayor was right, you're supposed to shake your head and say, I know, with regard to the waste park. So, we do need one, and Lindsey did find that. So, is it an alternate or an extra person? Okay, so who would, anybody like to, are you okay with me adding this now, by the way? Yep. Okay. Yes, another person. You're good? Okay, so Councilor Lesser, so does somebody wanna, you can make a motion for Councilor Lesser, and if anybody else wants to stand up and do it, we can do that as well? Okay? Yes, certainly.
Uh, just to inform Councilor Lesser that, uh, those meetings are typically held, I believe, 10 o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday, so just want you to be...
Is it like once a month or something? It's not often, yeah. Are you, are you okay with that? Okay, all right. Go ahead, deputy?
I'll make the motion to appoint Councilor Lesser to the Waste Park Committee.
I have a second? Okay, Councilor Hatfield. Uh, anybody else? Is there any other nominations? Do I have to ask three times? No. We're good? Okay, you accept Councilor Lesser, of course? Okay, good. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Our reports for information, they're all attached, I don't know if anybody had any questions on the reports, library reports, doctor recruitment, physician recruitment one. I did, um, I did go up to the, uh, hospital yesterday and delivered, every time a new group of doctor recruits come in, I deliver lunch and tell them about the town and, um, you know, lots of questions around what, what we offer here. They were asking about volleyball, and they were asking about soccer, uh, you know, all kinds of things, you know, where the good places to eat. Oh, is, is it a safe community? Because they had gone down to trivia at Heritage and they were walking back to the, I said, you're as safe as can be. If somebody pulls over and offers you a drive, then you're good to go. So it was, it was a great conversation. Okay, questions for committee chairs. Does anyone have a question for committee chairs? Anyone? Okay, good, and there were no additions. I think that's the first time. Approval of invoices, so the recommended motion is that the various invoices be approved for payment, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor. Seconded by Councilor Lesser. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried, and the date of next meeting? Do we know? Go ahead, CAO.
Uh, Your Worship, uh, the regular date for the next meeting would be August the 12th.
Yes, we have to...
I was going to just inform council that, uh, my, my annual vacation will, will conflict with that date, and so if you proceed on that date, I won't be here, just for your information. Um, but you do have the option, if you wish, um, to, so in our, in our town meetings bylaw, our council meetings bylaw, if council isn't gonna meet on the regular date, you have to say that at the, at a preceding regular council meeting, and your, your only option by our bylaw is to push it back one week, so that would be August the 19th. So, that, uh, I'm just, if, if you can meet without me, don't get me wrong, uh, but, um, I just want to make you aware of that, so you have the opportunity if you wish to...
Thank you. Okay, so the option is to continue to hold it on the 12th or move it to the 19th?
Certainly okay with the 19th.
Okay?
Wouldn't be the same without it.
No, wouldn't be, wouldn't be the same without our CAO. Okay?
What would we do?
Well, we certainly wouldn't look as smart. CAO, you do make us look good. You, you're doing a good job. Now, actually, I can, I can say he does make us look good because he brings all the facts to the table, but I have to say this council does their homework, and I, I really appreciate that. So a motion to make that change to the 19th of August, please. So moved by Councilor Cleveland, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Um, do we have in camera, CAO? No in camera? Can I have a motion to, what time is it?
What just happened?
But, you know, you know, I thought, I know, 6:30 really works, but we did a lot of work at the Committee of the Hold to get us here. We were, we were here, there for a long time having these discussions. So, uh, you know, as, as Councilor Lesser always tries to explain, we didn't make a whole bunch of quick decisions, we've done our homework, we've read, we've researched, we've asked questions, we discussed it openly at Committee of the Hold, and, and, uh, council meetings are simply for ratifying those decisions. Go ahead, deputy?
I don't want to grandstand here, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't give a shout out to Jim for those of us who attended his funeral or whatnot. And I know we called the election tonight, and whoever does step up to, to try to fill those shoes has a big shoes to fill, so, uh, he did a lot. And I know all of us who've kinda joined along the way, I know he helped me a lot and a lot of other people, so, uh, the town is, is definitely a different place without him, but whoever steps up, I guess we're here to help you, and, uh, there will be a hole in our, in our council for a little bit, so Jim will be missed.
Certainly will. I was, I was thinking the other day, he's the male version of Cinderella because there are no shoes to fit, there were only one pair of Jim's shoes. And, uh, yeah, there, there are, there are no shoes to fill, just, just a seat at the table, um, to make decisions, hopefully the way Jim made them, like, from his heart, for the community. Go ahead, Councilor Daers.
Just the hardest thing I've done since I've sat in this chair, is to look across the room at an empty chair. Oh, yeah, he'll be missed.
We good? Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you. Councilor Lesser and Councilor Hatfield.